I guess it's, let's see, it's about 9:34, we call a meeting to order, Young County Commissioners Court. Now, 9:34, we call a meeting to order, Young County Commissioners Court, Monday morning, 10:00 in 2014, 9:30 a.m. I make note that, notice given before the matter and the time required, but all members of the court present, if it's convenient, please stand for indication and pledge allegiance to Mr. Rogers.
That is great. You're here, Father, we just ask you to be with us this morning. God directs us, gives wisdom on His use of places this morning to better our county and better our community. Father, we just ask you to bring us some rain. Lord, we need some abundant amount of moisture to heal this land, to fill our tanks, fill our lakes. You know, water is life. And Fathers, we come through this period, through this special time of year, through Lent, we just ask you to prepare us to go out in the world and to serve you, and we ask you, Lord, to work your will in our lives, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Please, thank you. Okay, if it pleases the court, can we jump down to item number 14 first? The advisory board, this is for our matters information, file that application about, it went through about 8:45 Friday morning. They received well, haven't heard anything back. We just got the note that they had received that, picked it up, trust in everything, and well, we're here. So, I had on the, I sent a letter out to the advisory board, asked them to meet, I think maybe I might have made one little error, and I didn't put the time on there, 9:30, but we have two members here. Those members that were appointed were Johnny Lawson, Lane Kramer, Josh Phillips, Johnny Clark, and Carl Craig. And Carl had made a notification that he couldn't be here, and I had a little pledge. I've got here copies of the legislation that creates or gives us the ability to create a county energy transportation infrastructure. So, and also rules, tax law, I've got those for each of the board members. It also says in that legislation, I think it's highlighted, shouldn't be here, it is. Says a county is eligible to apply for a grant under subchapter C, chapter 256 of the county regs, and advisory board. We have Josh Phillips here, Johnny Clark here, they're members of the advisory board, only two members that I see present at the time. It also, legislation provides that the Commissioners Court shall determine the terms and the duties of the advisory board. So, has the court thought about that any, and do they have any directions that they want to give to the advisory board?
Obviously, we try to pick members that were capable of giving us a little direction and opinions. No, nothing that you give us, however, is binding by virtue of the law, however, is binding by virtue of knowing that you actually have something you can live to the process, and that's what we hope you'll do, is let us know when you think we're going off the end of the bar ditch, and when we're going in the right direction, and what you might think about it, and we will certainly take everything you have to say into consideration. That's one thing I have to say about that.
I just pray so standing up and serving on this board and the community.
There's, you don't have to take the help of the board, you can find someone.
Good.
Let me get a little sketch before I add. Expect.
You may be interested in the application and the projects, things like that, we've got those, and we make copies of that. There's several different projects involved in all of the different precincts, and it's accumulated in one application, total cost, so you may be interested, you may be interested in looking at that. Is there any interest in calling a meeting of that board? If you are under the Open Meetings Act, we'll be, and we'll need to post any meeting that the advisory board has 72 hours in advance.
They need, they need to meet once a quarter, once a quarter. Today's introductory meeting count as the first one, or they have to post it.
Post it, we say 8:00.
Okay, good. So, we don't need to meet again until June?
Not required of meeting, more often than not, unless the court needs to make it happen.
Yeah. How do we need to post information to these folks? Do you have email addresses or something like that?
No.
That'd be better for me, but I'm not sure. I got them, Josh got them.
Well, we sent them, we didn't get them returned, so they're out there somewhere.
So, I guess we can contact the board both by mail and by email would be good.
Yeah, we can, you'll contact the office, we'll give word to them, or get the information to them if you want to them, call a meeting at any time, the board makes its prudent to make.
Gentlemen, how do you prefer to discuss any pertinent matters you have with this advisory board prior to the beginning of the bid process on those projects, prior to the beginning of the project, or once we start the project?
I would say that once we get the monies that we're going to get, you know exactly how much it is, and we sit down and go over the project.
Go over the project that we have.
And kind of go from there.
A little steer it.
Yeah.
Monies that we'll be getting, there'll be an allocation, but we really won't get any money until we spend funds and apply for that remuneration yet. Just want those things pinned down, get back later.
Well, they give us a pretty good indication to take, once they get the invoice, and we're looking to get a pretty good turnaround.
Yeah, 30 days.
We need to get a good handle on that invoicing process, too.
Yes.
Is it going to be an input that you just input into, like, I don't like the Homeland Security thing, is, you know, you input it to their system, and it goes directly to them, that way, that's going to be tailored?
I don't know what that invoicing process looks like yet. All we've got now is an application process in effect, and we may actually have to have a signature from the advisory board on that invoice, just to let them know that we still have an active advisory board, because you guys were one of the links in the chain, and we had to create to get this money.
We all have a priority on lists to do, but I don't say that something is up at that one, that we have to do something different.
But there might be residual monies for other pieces of other projects, too.
You have any questions for us?
No questions. If you could, leave your mailing address, we'll continue here, and, you know, there could be, we might have the wrong mailing address on there, but I think you've got it here, Johnny, I believe, the telephone.
I'll give it here.
That's a good phone number.
And email, you got?
Is there any other matters with regard to county energy transportation investment that we need to discuss? I just want to call these members together so that we can get that bit of Brian here, introducing him, Brian Rax, lead editor, introducing to the court. We just have two of us present. Y'all may stay for the meeting, you're welcome to stay for it, you can be on your way about your business, however you want to go about that.
Thank you very much.
Please stop by, leave your address here, we'll whatever you want to.
Appreciate it. You bet.
Judge, can we skip one word, so that David Bryan, you guys can skip that.
Okay. Put your hand. That's how it's done.
Hit it, David.
Okay. Come on up here, David.
You on there? Not as far a shot. David just brought in his revised quotes to match the proper amount of phones. So, as you can see, when you reduce the amount of phones, you reduce system requirements, which ultimately reduces the cost. You're right.
Thirty then.
I'm sorry?
Thirty then.
Maybe from forty to thirty.
Yeah. In fact, we had less phones.
Right. Tell us a little bit about your efforts in trying to.
I spent all last week contacting local phone companies within about a 65 to 100 mile radius, and, but due to service, after we purchased, it makes more sense that we have somebody local that can get to us, because we experienced difficulties with natural cell systems being driven at Dallas, and each time they come in, they charge us heavy traffic fee. I spoke to four different companies, two of which said, one of which actually was a shell company that more or less answered the phones in Weatherford, or a company that sits in Grand Prairie, and they said they were booked throughout summer and wouldn't be able to get to us later, but normally, the size of job that they do, this is actually larger than what we were looking at getting done, so it wouldn't be worth their time anyway. Spoke to another company out of which called Falls, and he never got back with me, and I spoke with Chuck over at Brazos, we did a walkthrough, he seemed fairly interested in the job, and I'd never heard back from him. He knew today's date was the day we were going to reevaluate this. I spoke to David, let him know that the proper amount of phones we'll be looking at instead of forty, and he brought this by this morning for real consideration.
What's the topic?
Charlie. David, you want to give us a little assessment about the circumstances out there?
Well, I've been.
And that's in your opinion?
I've been going out there for about two to three months now, and we've had some problems with the recording, you know, recorder process, and now the phones, all the displays are garbled, so it seems like it's going downhill.
What we call.
The lighting that y'all had a year ago or something like that. And it also could have something to do with the cable that's going underground, back to back. We were going to replace that cable, underground cable, same kind. I've had some troubles and stuff like that before, and started shorting out the phones or phone system.
Which can't actually validate that that's the cause. What's the brand of system that's in there now?
NEC.
NEC?
NEC.
NEC.
I've dealt with NEC's for probably 15 years, they're not a good quality phone system. I like Panasonic. I'll stand by that Sony. So, I've had systems in since 92.
But you can actually testify accidentally.
You know, the good thing about staying with one system, that means we can have extra phones, if something does go south, Eric can take that phone over, plug it in, we're back on again. It's that simple.
Right.
And the fact about trading local, I think, and then having somebody that services what they sell is worth a large amount of money. Yeah, and I do go out of town for jobs. I'm not going to charge you a trip charge. If it's an emergency, I guess. Well, you've got the people that, in case it's an emergency, you can probably. I've got those two, so definitely, if I'm out of town or something, by myself, usually sometimes they'll go with me.
David, you think that if you have an emergency that has jeopardized public safety in any way that you can get here and get to it, take care of it for us?
There's also a capability that we have set up down here as well, that we haven't really experienced in time, that we had to utilize, where he can actually remote in.
Remote diagnosis.
And worst comes the worst, he can walk me through things here. We haven't been in dire straits where we've had to do that, but it is a possibility and a capability that we got.
What would be the timeframe, once you have the telephones and the equipment ready to put in, how long would it take to install or change the system?
Well, I'd have, I'd have dispatch going pretty quick, probably 30 minutes at most. And then, then we can get the rest of the phones, you know, what it probably takes. That's the worst case. The earliest, I could probably have it going probably.
Assuming that we are changing.
All I'd have to do is change out the main equipment of the NEC, switch it out with Panasonic, start looking at phones. Start by that.
You got full cable, underground cable up there?
Well, we can use some of the cable right now, until we get the new one pulled in, and then what we can do is just switch that over. Basically, we can use it, switch it over real quick. Okay. All we have to do is.
This is the digital system we're talking about?
I spoke with David about it, but more or less, we could, like I suggested earlier in previous meetings, we would be allowed to, with this system, to roll over to the phone service that we use here at the court, that could severely cut costs of what we're currently paying with AT&amp;T. So, like we said in the past, it would more or less help pay for the system itself in a matter of, honestly, a matter of about two or three years.
On distance service charges.
Has there been compatibility problem with NEC and recorder system? Is that any part of the problem?
No, not yet.
Would be if there's built a problem with that, that Sony.
Basically, all digital systems work about the same, it's just the quality of equipment.
Are the phones we have out there now digital?
It's a digital system.
It is a digital system.
And this system, you can actually go up the.
It's a new system here. We had to date in with the other system? So, as far as the grades are concerned?
Yeah, I'm thinking, like, can you get the phones anymore?
What?
Hello. We'll, if y'all decide to do this, we'll stake it out of contingency, and I'll probably have to move a little bit more money, because we already designated 40,000 for our two extra bowlers, and that's going to leave 50,000 in there, so with that, I'm moving two other thousand from somewhere else to.
Do we know what that system costs in there? Was that built?
No, I don't.
That was all?
That was all done through the contract.
Southwest Department, I'm sure we approved that.
If I know through the change orders, I could probably find out, but.
That is big for curiosity sake.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm thinking my bid was around 2700 or something like that, and it was probably 5,000. I knew that.
Sure. Where are their profits somewhere else? I do.
Well, I just wanted to make sure this worked with the recorder, and we didn't have to do a patch, that it was a system. I knew David, he's worked with me, with my equipment. Yes.
The system got patched on anything?
No, not for the recorder.
No, I'm talking about the one that's in there.
No, no.
All it does is it flips some of the, kind of piggybacks some of the digital ports, and records of digital ports. It's perfect.
So, David, in your professional opinion, are we receiving additional durability as well as reliability with the system?
But why do you think I'll manage that stuff?
I don't handle that stuff. I'll make a motion, we can go ahead and go with my L telephone, and replace all of the lines after I'm sure it's going to end on, take the money out of the contingency fund.
Is this bid here to change that money also?
Yes.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion on the second, to purchase new telephone system for the Young County Law Enforcement Center for my L telephone, and price of 17,000 dollars, and that's installed. And for that fund to be funded out of the contingency fund, and did you?
It'd be all right to do it, because we're going to do this now, when we do the bowlers, I'll make it move a couple thousand to somewhere else.
Okay, be funded from the contingency. Call it, favor? Okay, on opposition.
We'll probably take some out of the court. David, appreciate it. I would like you to.
Don't make me figure it out.
Yeah, I think.
No, I thought I'd be deliverable, seal envelope May Friday, late Friday afternoon.
Yes, you want to go in there?
Yeah, by 11:00. Item number 17, consider finance, refinance option for current equipment and vehicle leases, American National Leasing Company, and of course, National Bank Leasing Company.
I thought that was going to be a bit, something to be a surprise.
Drew Hubel was here late Friday afternoon, early late Friday afternoon, and said he had previous engagement today.
Okay. Do you want me to open my confidence right quick or just?
Don't just.
Okay, okay. He's spoken, a refinance rate of 2.20.
American National?
An American Nation.
2.20.
And this, and Stewart's here, if y'all have any questions, I'll answer them.
I have a copy. I'll just give you all your thing in the cloud, so if y'all want to use mine.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a little.
A little cup of coffee.
Please, sir.
And I'll look through my picture before putting on.
What kind of way you hand it, pass it back in?
Sorry. You're not supposed to hand this point there. Okay, y'all have your copies in front of you. Previous interest rate is 2.25 percent, with the fees and dog fees waived. And we showed you the savings on each of those.
2.2 percent?
2.25 percent.
Previous interest rate.
See, that's what I like to see right here, is you have the breakdown from the savings side of it, which was different. The other.
And I did make a comment on that, too. Two weeks ago, Kupas was lower, but yet it was more expensive than what First National was, if y'all noticed that. So, yeah, his interest rate might have been lower, but it was more expensive.
You're saving as little as much.
There's a difference in the calculation there between whether they use 48 months or 40, 52 months, with regard to the extension of the lease agreement. So, does that depend on which one? As far as that savings and the amount of loan, I guess refinancing makes a difference over the 48 months.
See the differences in the terms?
Terms and.
Yeah. Yeah, but they only showed, they only showed breakdown in there for 36, which basically, even if you want to pull a terminal, they showed a little terminal for both of them. Isn't that, isn't that correct? If I can speak. Yeah, please. You know, I made that comment last quarter, I don't understand why there's a difference. I'm using the exact same number as he is, as a payoff, making the exact same payments through the exact same term, and I'm saving you $7,000 more or so. It wasn't the first time I'd seen that, I'd seen his bid like that in several other counties. I'm not here to explain how he does his interest rate, all I know is, at 2.25, I'm saving you more money than he is at 2.2. I mean, I had the example of the last commissioner report where we showed you one instance of a better rate, the same amortization schedule, it was saving you $1,700, and I was going to save me that. So. I'm going to go on, I'm going to go on for seven months, which is going to be First National. I mean, if we, if Stacy goes with somebody, or Jimmy goes with somebody else, and I go with somebody else, it is what it is. I mean, you just go.
No, not necessarily so, I mean, that's a matter of the court, even your financing package.
Well, I've already financed one thing, First National.
But we both agree that way.
All right.
Yeah, we can take anything, any financing source we might find, right? Now the question here, do we want to refinance our entire fleet of vehicles in the county with whomever we may select? Do we want to finance our entire fleet of vehicles that we have financed with whomever we may select here at this interest rate refinance rate?
Well, we're looking at one.
This savings is, is for the entire fleet, right?
Well, it can be, or it can be broken up.
But this, this total number here, does that include everything?
Yes.
Well, the thirty-eight thousand is there.
Well, we currently have. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars, or do you want to?
Well, gentlemen, the interest rates that they've been the last couple of years, we were probably missing not looking for refinancing before they brought it to us. The fact that Stewart changed jobs and what precipitated us taking a look at what we were spending interest money on. It was a good time to do so.
What's financing the future of there depending on what court wants to do? Will that one include in what they offer they add on if they want to do it with some other?
But refinancing in total is, is coming because it's.
Which in that internal is, is you can save that much money across the board.
Well, we're obviously going to refinance with somebody, but we can save this much money. No, that's a lot of dollars for a calculator.
Same seven thousand dollars or more.
If they go figuring on the same number of days, math, the two point two, it's got to save more money than two point two five.
Show me that because it didn't show. And they, they use the same schedule?
Well, the calculators, I mean, the same number of days, the two point two is going to be the cheaper.
But it wasn't. Is that, is that correct, Stewart? Two point two will save you money on the same term and the same balance?
It did when I did it, but his two point two to my two point five, I'm saving thousand dollars cheaper.
Is there other, are we discussing different terms? Is your two point five, your two point two?
No, the, the example he showed the court back in February tenth, or whatever it was, was the exact same sheet that I used with the amortization schedules for the payments and the ending balances.
I have those in here.
Where do you suppose the difference is?
I don't want to speculate.
Where do you suppose the difference is, Mr. Ross?
Just the number of days calculated.
The number of days of interest earned.
Well, if you run that on forty-eight month deal, we, we may have to run the entire course of the fact that we finance, finance. May have to go out fifty-two months from where it started, or what passed, so that's something like a difference. In the amount of dollars would be safe. Both of them figured just from now, forty-eight months, now it, you know, two point two, it'll be the same on, on the same balance.
On the same, yes, or same term, same balance, that'll be safe.
Well, doesn't make any sense how two point two should have less savings than a two point two five.
You know, what is the real difference in point on five percent interest?
Some of these things, I guess, will be coming. They'll be the payoff or replaced or something. Or within sooner than forty-eight months, or sooner than fifty-two months, and some of them we may be out there.
Fifty-two.
Pass that again. From the day of the starting, like, or, or planning. A little bit confusing.
Like I said, Judge, I'm not, I'm not trying to answer his calculation. I know that when I compare them, I'm the one that originally did the numbers.
Yeah.
When I was with America. So I know the start date, I know the end date. I've gotten it from him. I don't know what he's doing. I, I made, I made an accusation the last court that it was fuzzy numbers, fuzzy math. I don't know what he's doing. All I know is that two point two, if I were to do the two point two, it would have saved you over forty thousand dollars. And that's why I gave the example. At two and a half percent, he was only saving you twenty-one thousand dollars. So three tenths of a basis point, now he's saving you another ten thousand dollars.
By dropping his interest.
Well, but three tenths of a point's not going to give you ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars.
Not being down. So I.
That's the third one.
Even when the numbers changed at the last court, Mr. Commissioner Sykes asked him on the tenth if the numbers would be the same on the twenty-fourth. And he said, yes. Well, he showed up on the twenty-fourth with different numbers. So I was using the numbers from the tenth. And even with the higher payoff, I'm still saving you more money. I just kind of can't figure that out.
American National didn't give any examples or anything like that, or any timeframe here or any other information, nothing. Then they'll refinance at two point two percent.
Yes. I just like, I like the relationship I have with Mr. Cobb. He's always, him and Mr. Didn't want to buy any equipment, and usually work really well together. Also, I don't know. I mean, he was with American National before, and now he's with First National. I like it. I feel like if my bank went from one bank to another bank here, I might just walk along and go to like that bank. And he is often, it shows the savings.
It makes sense, the savings.
Yeah. First National's interest rate bid or proposal is at two point two five percent?
One oh five percent. Get a better statement.
I sure would like to figure out where that's at.
I have those sheets from last time.
I got them right here.
I'll take my people, my blue tape.
Is he, is he financing each one of our vehicles at the remaining term at that interest rates? We got varying end dates on all the refinance, instead of all being at the same?
They're all the same.
They're all the same.
The end dates are different.
I'm trying to find that.
Whenever it was financed the first time, everything stayed the same.
So if we refinance, we'll have the same end date on all of our.
Not the same end date. You'll have the same date that you had when you financed it. Whatever that end date.
That's what I mean. So they're all going to be financed with terms that they're on the name.
Exactly.
So if we started at one with forty-eight, and there's thirty-two months left, you refinance it for thirty-two months.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Only thing changing is the percentage of the rate. And that's what don't make sense. It's like you said, the same.
Is he refinancing everything for forty-two, for where?
He didn't show that on that last hand relationship he gave us.
That makes sense. Yeah, because.
Some terms will be longer, so the interest rate.
We're going to start all over.
But what names of people?
What I notice I get daily is, you see, what this does is, this lowers your amount of money that you'd be putting in on your, your payment. And I don't want to lower my amount of money that I'm going to change and pay. I'm going to keep my payment rate the same, which is going to determine, put that much money right back on my note, which I have paid off quick. You know, keep, you know, to me, this is.
Primarily, my company is in the prop, is in the business of refinancing. And people refinance to lower that payment to make their monthly cash flow.
Right.
Work better for them. But they increase their cost of interest, even though the interest rate is lower, because they extend the term over what their original term.
That's a problem.
Now, they're stretching that, but they're stretching it thinner so far the payment.
I want to keep my payments the same.
Well, there's no reason that you can't pay whatever it is you want to pay. It's setting up a different type of right. Tell us about First National Bank, which call.
Who are they? We're an independently owned bank. Service two locations, Wichita Falls. We have a location in South Lake, Texas, and a location in Austin. We're very similar in size and nature of businesses, American. But the only difference is they have a significant, significant trust department, which we do not do trusts. Other than that, we do business pretty much the same.
What kind of term?
Well, we're not, we're an S four versus, we're working for. It's, uh, the things that appealed to me, Mike, about coming there were cost of funds, we had lower cost of funds. Which allows us to do the lower bridge surrender. The other thing I want you to keep in mind, you know, when it comes to the refinancing, is not every bank will do a balloon loan. And that was where we've always had the niche was, you know, very few banks will do the balloon. And we amortize the loan to the final payment. So you're only making that payment from the amount of finance to the ending balance. Whether it be based on the guaranteed buyback, or based on what you want to pay account to. There are very few lenders in the United States that do those types of loans.
See, but Jim, you have the two point. See, I have the two point.
I should have cut it off where they came, where they came.
This one is. So here's a two point two, I can't try to print on legal, so I can't find it originally. And then, okay. And then here is, I think this is Stewart's. Yeah, she's still printing it there. I printed this far, but. Did you have the two point oh, the two point two oh?
So you have, what other counties have come over to First National?
Knox County, Willmar County, um, Flint County, Archer County, we're on the agenda there for the second court this one.
So pretty much a very outrageous service.
Yeah. There's only, the issue was, you know, Mike kind of got out ahead of me on some of these counties. And he presented this, I'll call, I still call it fuzzy math, to every county I went to. And most of my counties caught it first go, go around. First time it came out, they were like, well, how could his numbers be different when he has the loan? I don't know. You know, but I had amortization schedules and proved it out, like I did last time. And I've only lost two counties to them, all the refinancing packages. And, you know, it is what it is. I mean, the main thing is we're saving customers money. And that's what's important. It's the overall savings that we're providing to, to the county.
You don't anticipate service levels to change in any way?
I need to start to look at this big old hairy legged cat. I don't think you've ever, and nobody's going to ever have a problem.
No, Stewart's.
I'll make a motion. I'll be with Stewart. When their day comes, and they still owe one hundred and sixty thousand on this piece of equipment, you expect the county to write, write check for that? Are you going to handle that?
Well, I mean, Stacy, typically y'all trade those equipments before you hit those final, the little payments. So even if you paid that fifth year payment, you're going to trade it, or you're going to refinance it? You're going to sell it out, perhaps? I mean, nothing changes in the way you do business as a county commissioner.
You know, I hope to get my paid off, five zero balances online, I guess, way it ought to be. But some days will not get paid off, I believe.
I'd say zero balances don't mind as well. Well, but you can't continue to add to your balance, expect it to get there.
This was on a.
I believe I have the listing.
I'll keep trading it for three years, we're not keeping increasing that final lot of balance.
My fear is that you get rid of the annual payment for the new equipment that's covered under four warranty, and you go back to a line item for maintenance where you're spending twenty thousand, fifty thousand dollars for transmission engines.
But we haven't been doing that. But you know, I've got a lot of equipment there on the yard that's got engines and transmissions on them, like a loader and a backhoe and all those kind of things that aren't under warranty. So am I wrong to have those on the yard, paint for and all? You know? Well, sure, it's all, it's all equipment.
It is.
So I'm saying that just spend all that extra money on the cost of the equipment. I can pay them repairs too. I've got fifty thousand dollars on engine on a loader.
I'll make a motion, we go in, go with refinancing with First National Bank.
I'll say.
Those are numbers, numbers tell the story.
You go the same term, two point two is not cheaper than two point two five.
What's your thing? They don't show it.
Where's the motion in the second?
Well, you know, obviously there's differences in. Whether any balances or something have been calculated or lengthed time, because two point two zero is less than two, um, two point two five. So there's going to be, people go wherever it's just. The difference is large.
I believe that's fair in itself, if he didn't come up with the right numbers, and this is his job. My opinion there.
And did you represent? What did you calculate for the refinance balance account?
The exact same number he presented on February tenth.
Two point two five.
No, I'm talking about the balance that we're financing.
Judge, it's changed. I don't know that, we don't know what the payouts are now. I mean, the payout's changed from February tenth to February twenty-fourth, and March changed.
Because I, there was a February fifteenth payment I had to make, so we made that payment. I have one due now, March fifteenth, for several of y'all. I haven't made that, and I want to wait and see what you can do today.
I mean, you have copies. What, what, from February tenth presentation, they turned out at two point five percent. Whatever that balance was, is what I used.
Well, you're, each one of you is projecting savings.
I think savings are what they're.
You know, all, each one, each balance is going to change if something is paid off earlier. I mean, that'll change the balance earlier than you calculated. If it's paid off earlier on First, on American National, then that's going to change that figure.
Well, I question that too, Judge. I mean, the whole razzle dazzle, you don't need to sign contracts. I mean, how, from an accounting standpoint, are you going to balance your books without an amortization schedule with the lower rate? So that's where I, that's, like I said, there's something I don't understand on that side of it. I understand it because I did the original number. And like I said in my letter, I hold that to be true. I know for a fact, I've done the amortization. I did the amortization at two point two, two point two five, two point five. And every time compared to his two sheets, I'm cheaper at two and a quarter than he was at two point five. Even when I did two point five, I was cheap. Using his amortization schedule from the tenth. Knowing the ending balance, I just, I might accuse him of anything. Maybe he just, I don't know. I just, I'm trying to my head, my shoulder, you know?
Okay, we've got a motion. We'll be seconded then, that's it. Refinancing. Vehicles and equipment currently financed with American National. About all vehicles and equipment currently with American National. That includes the, uh.
Did it say the same phrase?
He got a different bill.
Yeah, he's got a different.
He got a different bill.
Okay, those, uh. Now more of that. The package presented.
There you go. The current package that we presented.
That was current.
Vehicle from.
About all the sheriff's vehicles, constable vehicles, everything that we talked about on this sheet.
I'll never know what Stacy thought.
I think, so we do go payment, that's where, that payment may probably be the last.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Call in favor of the refinancing package? Excuse me? All opposed?
Three, I'm going to say.
I am, because I'm not sure. I'm not ready to make, I'm not ready to do this too. With all, 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 you know, there's, I'm real, value means a lot to me. The relationship that you were talking about earlier. Of course, you've got to understand the American and National leasing relationship we had before was with Mr. Cobb. He's now with a different company. But the point that Commissioner Rogers and the judge brings up, it's two point two, figuring the same bounce for the same turn is going to be different. And I want to know where those differences are and make sure that when we okay something here, that we fully understand what we're financing and that it doesn't bite us with something that we're not seeing at the moment.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I'll withdraw my bid and let y'all go with American. I don't understand.
We've already voted.
I know, but I don't understand.
And it's one, two, one.
Two? I, I don't understand. I'm trying to let this be what it is. I really don't.
Three.
The two? It's the majority.
One, two, three.
Two abstained.
Stacy's against.
These are candidates.
Two, y'all two.
You abstained. So that means there's only three people voting now. You abstained.
I have that too.
Y'all the majority.
Or does not.
Oh, my goodness.
I will. It's the majority of members present.
Then, then y'all should, y'all should actually make a decision and, and not put the court in bail. Y'all keep doing that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not holding the court back. You're, you're.
I'm unsure, I'm unsure of the, your numbers presented.
I'll make a decision on the court, we're not okay with the numbers. And it doesn't mean that, I would, uh, I would really regret you withdrawing your.
No, I withdraw my bid, I really do. I just, I don't understand. The decision, number one, and I'm on record showing that we were saving 7,000 more dollars. I mean, we could do this all year. We could keep coming back. On February 10th, I had the lower bid. We came back on the 27th or whatever it was in February, I was saving more money. And I'm back here on the 10th, and I'm still saving more money. I withdraw. Y'all do it. You know what the point is, it don't make sense to me, is it's. When you did, and I know two point two makes a difference. Here we're all the same. I understand. No one, when the numbers come out and it looks like what it looks like, that's red flag. If you got the same amortization change, you got the same numbers.
It's to me, I just don't know who's got the right number.
Not the same number.
Well, I'm not sure that he didn't calculate it in error also when he figured those same numbers. And I have no reason to doubt Stewart's numbers. But I have no reason to doubt the other numbers either, and they're different, so I want to investigate those for myself a little bit.
But you know, we, Cobb has been consistent all the time. Even when he come in here, he come in with two point two five, he stayed with two point two five. So the contest wasn't there. And he had two point two five when American National's at two point five. We kept coming back and coming back, you know, so. I just.
Well, it's not important, so circumstances, didn't he? We didn't begin that properly, we let somebody make a, uh, an offer to us without the knowledge of the other party that we had financed with. And that's probably our obligation to allow that to happen once. Well, they came in after this time, so they, um, you know, it got into a bit of war on tip to tap thing. That's unfortunate.
Well, I regret that Mr. Cobb didn't understand my position on voting, the way I voted today.
Well, you had to do it the way you voted.
I understand.
And I better to present that or to request that.
When it comes to monetary decisions for this county, I will make sure that I make the proper ones.
Actually, we were asking for a financing proceeding, but I don't know that we have requested. How much is this gonna save, propose the data?
That's another thing, interest rates don't always tell them.
Which I've always gone with whoever you wanted to.
I know, that's what.
Finance, I don't know why y'all just do that. And that's up to y'all.
That's what I was trying to say.
But, you know, because before, we even still have one financed in Oklahoma, I can think it's the last payment coming up, so.
I'm clear that vote did fail because of, uh, it did not make the majority of the members here present at the time. That's almost two, one, two. Being Commissioner Sykes and myself abstaining from the vote.
And why did you abstain?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the package. I couldn't see where two point two five was gonna save more money than two point two oh. All the same balance, the same length of time, it can't happen that way unless there's some other charges or something else that's in it.
So you're just gonna, we're just gonna keep making payments on the finance way we had whenever these were financed, it's all, I mean, a whole hot pool of money, we're losing.
See, that's the thing, we gotta make decisions on that, obviously, what we're gonna do.
Well, since we have no other bid, we've got to go with American National leasing with their refinancing offer, with their two point two five, or two point two oh.
The only thing with that is, 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 is I'd like to see what the true numbers is, and why, what we're, let me see.
Take it back to where I'm at. You know?
But here's where I'm at with Cobb. And I seen why he was upset because.
You could tell.
You don't know that he was, his numbers is exact, he's the one that, that, he basically done our, our stuff for us. He wasn't Mr. Cooper.
I agree.
And he's the one that knows what it is, what another thing is, and what's, you know?
But Mr. Cooper signed off on it. Mr. Cooper says, well, was.
I agree. So, so let me ask you a question, Stacy. If, if you were buying your trucks, like you bought your trucks for 250,000 dollars or whatever, and other than ABC Finance that wanted to finance it at two point one five, would you want it then? Well, then, see, that, that, this is the point, this is the point that Jim, Mr. Wild and I wanted to make, is if, I like my backhoe. We were financing them at what, three something? And he come in at two point two five, so I'd finance my backhoe to that. If you can say that we're kind of winning. That, that's what I'm trying to say about pick what you.
Sure, but we have a working relationship with American National.
We've got a working relationship with Stuart Cobb too.
He's not financing through, through American National, it's a working relationship.
But, okay, but what does the working relationship mean? Explain it.
I just think they, they're in the business to loan counties money, they've done this before.
They are too.
They just started this, man. They just started this leasing. It's a startup.
Okay, we, this kind of conflict little situation here, but we've had a motion, a second, a vote. That vote, my opinion failed, two, one, two, that's too far, one against and two abstaining. It didn't require, it didn't meet the majority of the members present, so it can't pass. First National, Stuart Cobb, and First National Bank, Wichita Falls, withdrawn their bid, or their proposal subsequent to that. Is there any other motion?
I make the motion for refinancing American National with two point two.
Then why would you make that motion? Whenever Mr. Sykes just said that he'd rather check into it and see why. Huh? You know what I'm saying?
That's the only offer we have, they don't have two point two.
But you don't want.
They had three point two.
Stacy, do you not want the right numbers? Or you want this, whatever numbers are coming up to it?
I don't know that, uh, Mr. Cobb was in another number.
I'm talking about Mr. Cooper presenting the right numbers.
Right number, what they are. It is what it is. Refinancing these numbers.
Mr. Rogers?
We have a question about that. If this motion does not get a second, fails, can we come back in our next meeting and accept a proposal? After, after we do some more scrunching of these numbers? For individual? Well, once again, my same question is, I want, I want to clarify these numbers before I vote either way. And I, I will, I will vote one way or the other once I clarify the numbers.
How long do you think the two point two is gonna be out there for us?
I don't know.
Don't you think they'll withdraw it since there's no competition?
I wouldn't expect. I wouldn't expect, I would expect like there's no competition out there, at least the only two people we've done business with. There's other people that want our business.
Uh, two point two, how you know? What guy's that bigger?
Well, I'd be hypocritical to vote for your motion and vote in abstention on the other one, so.
If they have three point two five, it's.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't honor a second of the vote, then, uh, it will die and we will bid three point two five.
Until we reconsider finance.
In the way that Commissioner Court has acted in the last month, you think somebody really wants to jump up in here and get something?
Well, in what, what way are you referring to? That we're trying to be careful with our taxpayer's dollar, or that we just haven't made a decision to jump on somebody?
Tip to tap. Now it's your turn. Well, he had two terms. He got to put in two bids, so let's let this other guy put in two bids. Is that really professional?
I don't know. I mean, there was a quote in the paper from Matt Poots, that a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars for our taxpayer. Do you not go along with that?
I've got a motion to go from two point two, from three point two five to two point two, that's over a thousand dollars.
Sure is.
But it'll still be there two weeks. I'm not so sure of that. The only way it was there today is because of the competition. That competition is withdrawn.
If, if they would actually do that, then that would show what kind of company they really are on the bids out there. If they can't hold on for another two weeks, then that shows what they are. And then you're thinking, oh, my goodness, can we just screw up?
It wasn't that bad, they are second to that motion. I'm not gonna second motion, either, but, uh, those things voting on. If there's no other, um, second, then that motion will die for lack of second.
I'd like, I'd like to move that we reconsider refinancing our equipment at the next meeting. Capital on the agenda for discussion.
Do you have a banking plan?
No, not that I would want to. But putting that position to the court.
Well, I'm trying to say is, that we look over those two pieces of paper.
Yeah, I'm gonna have somebody look over the two pieces of paper, yeah, just as a, just as a resource. My, obviously, my shortcoming here is figuring out what the difference in those two rates and what those balances are. And I want to make sure that, that we're just not overlooking something. You know, I have nothing against either one of those gentleman's or, or the counties, you know?
My biggest deal is, is that much discrepancy in between two point two five, two point two oh, with the savings on it.
Yeah. But, once again, I'll, all what Stacy says, that two point two oh, will result in some additional savings.
It, it does make sense, you know? Even at that, this should be, the numbers should be like those.
It's been very small. We're talking about very small numbers here.
That's what I'm saying, very small.
But once we took sealed bids, we kind of obligated ourselves to look at that small difference. Probably should have made a decision a month ago, you're right. But we didn't. But this, it has been settled this court before too. Chief of Justice. And we're cost American constituents a month's worth of interest on all, added three point three five, five, two five, whatever it is. And so, but we don't want to hurt them more in the long run by picking the wrong number, so.
All right. Just like, I'm gonna second the motion. Motion to reconsider finance. Hopefully get a little bit better clarification, um, of that.
And you'll be set up for this?
I'll, I'll make, I promise you guys, I'll make a decision next time whether to.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying, Mike, I was looking at a reason, can you find somebody to look at the numbers? I'm gonna try to find somebody to explain their positions to me on the financial case.
I'd like it. Here, uh, you know, what we think, consider on that is knowing what our balance, our, the balance is on the amount that we owe. And that's all of them. You know, it's, it's gonna be, if we do that, then we're bound to just look at a percentage point because there's so much variation there when you pay that off. When you pay that off early, it's gonna be less.
That would, that would be determined by us, someone.
Yeah. And if you don't pay them off early, you're just gonna have to look at the turn of all of the pieces of equipment, vehicles that you have, and when that last one's gonna be paid off. I don't know what that number is, I'm not sure what that number is.
The payoff balance changes every day. Changes every day.
Okay, we've got a motion of Mr. Sykes to reconsider refinancing proposals. That's gonna be on our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
I would. I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
What about considering each person's?
Any abstain?
We need to, we need to get this refinanced.
Some folks have to make some payments that are due here in just a few days.
So I'm clear that, uh, motion placed by O. I'll, I'll see.
Those payments that you're about to make, you're gonna be making payments on interest earned anyway, so you're not really affecting what we're doing here at this moment, so.
Okay.
It'll take about ten minutes, right?
Okay, that's, uh, yes, we can. Ten minutes, right?
They kind of do tax.
Yeah, her back. She meant another package.
Yeah, he wasn't really hitting them about eighty, two percent of the.
Okay, we'll come back in a second. If you please, the court. And, that's, uh. Might as well just go on to, um, rate thing. Consider requesting bids on junk iron, I guess you'd say, old coves, other miscellaneous scrap steel, metal precinct three.
That's just going to try to be, uh, more transparent and all that, with my junk iron, scrap iron, and probably go out to throw it anyway. I don't want to be quoted as saying that, but just give everybody opportunity to bid, and it's going to be bid in my yard, back there where I got my old cupboard stacked, so it's just going to be, uh.
Has anybody else got any of those? You've got. We've always got scrap metal to get rid of, but not at this moment.
Are you, we're going to advertise and pay them?
Yeah, I guess that's all where we advertise, uh, the nice to nine twenty dollars.
Increase.
And how much you, well, if you only got three tons?
We're going to overspend and.
Well, yeah, why don't you, why don't you just call people? Instead of.
Get pricing, don't get bids.
Yeah.
This was the precedent of a frame you were setting when we just went out for bids on their fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it sure does cost a lot to bid and pay them.
Don't get, don't get married and pay the people.
Then you have to wait so long and.
Yeah, but they, but give everybody opportunity to, you know. What I'm trying to do is just be transparent. Get the check, get the money back.
Because you're going to get pricing.
Yeah, let's just go up and price.
Not bids for pricing.
Yeah, so what it costs there.
I know you probably might, only get enough to buy what it could cost.
I know. Why don't price them? It'd be about five hundred dollars probably.
It'd be three hundred if you do.
Then she can get us a break on advertising up there.
That's probably a good answer, right?
Good answer.
Falling around with salvage property.
No.
Salvage. So I would go falling around with salvage property.
I guess every piece of scrap metal, tire, glass, whatever we got us, we'll salvage, it's going to have to be put up for bid.
They are, I just.
That's a change from what heretofore has happened in the county.
Uh, somebody doesn't keep up for bid on that. Your commissioner, somebody doesn't keep up for bid on that. You're a commissioner, never.
No, we never have.
Be a, I'm going to be a bad old thing. We got a pretty good stack of coves, so we're going to just kiss three tons for a thousand dollars.
But when you get them on that, and you're talking about tires, I can find somebody that's ready to do something with tires, please let me know.
What do you do with them tires?
Well, there used to be a place in Appleland, uh, Stanford that you could haul them to.
Not there anymore.
Not there anymore. I think there's a, um, a little funeral somewhere like that.
There is a company down there that will, they use it in the process of cement and also repaving. And they'll probably take as many of them as you can get. Give, it'd just be the process of you going down there, taking them to them, loading and taking them to it.
At this point, I'm willing to do that. That's a lesser expense than the disposal fee per tire, I think.
The one that I checked on the disposal fee, then come and get it, which is in that part of the world, too. You look, about three dollars a tire or something like that, or come and get it and then take it back down.
Yeah, it's not that. You got a lot of these, they only dollar and that, come in.
So this conversation is reminiscent of what we just had about the financing. We talked about this last year, we need to do something.
I don't like that.
I need to make another round before I'm ready. Because I got to be, it takes a couple of weeks before I'm ready. Let's get back on.
Okay. I can understand what you might want to, sir.
I don't know about these, uh, and let them drive them down, then looking for you to.
If they do, they'll come get it, and they'll charge you for it.
It's like dropping a dumpster. It's a drop fee.
Throw them all in the bag and take it in. If we're going to get them out and get them out.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll clear the court from that.
And who pays the day?
Can, can they just price them on that, too?
Well, we'll try to do that while, let me look and get a little. It's two hundred and dollars, it's not going to be a whole lot. There's not going to be much money there.
I'll say.
What was the motion?
For pricing.
Yeah.
Can, can you wait till the next meeting?
What's the difference in salvage, the way we handled it previous to this and salvage, you know?
I, I've just done, I've never done pricing. Well, actually, I kind of have. I've called Brown, and then I'd call Breckenridge, whichever one had the highest, I'd go ahead and just almost, uh.
Price of the day kind of thing?
Yeah, pretty much.
You know, well, well.
You know what we did? We checked the sale. We bring in the.
Don't you violate, you're next to give my go to the treasurer.
Sure, you violate.
They make up.
Would have been on the table. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
If I did, it was a good base. The money won't run back to the enemy.
I can do pricing, I don't know if that works.
Okay.
I don't know, right, so we do, just table it?
No.
I think we had a motion in the second.
Rogers moved.
I said.
Second. To proceed pricing? Or request, request pricing?
Call for pricing.
All in favor?
Stacy, you're going to take care of all that getting the pricing out of Mexico, do anything.
Well, we're not going to have to bid.
You want to go ahead and do sixteen while we're in here? On the side of fire?
We hit the three.
Yeah, we're not in the way. We're getting public comments ready.
It's pricing. Judge?
Yes.
That five up?
Yes. Okay, we're going to consider asbestos abatement pricing.
I call the three companies that were recommended by the, uh, the company that took the samples. The first one I'm headed out there, this is the company that did the abatement for us in the courthouse. Back there. And all of these, they have all, they all came down to look at it, measured it. And I think they all looked closely with the, uh, company that took the samples. Thank you, that's, that's what, I printed it.
Lord.
Because of the experience we have with one priority and the amount of bid, I would move that we go with one priority on, on.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there some discussion you want to have?
Yeah, let's have a little discussion there. Uh, or, um, was it one priority that made the comment with regard to the removal of the stuff around there? Or, um, okay, I won't make any difference to them, but.
What was the comment, man?
Well, of course, there were a lot of pallets there and some old furniture and things that we got the end micro over here to move out into the, uh, either the, um, old commissary room or the, um, exercise yard. Get that off the floor and out of the way.
So they get to, if they get to.
But then there's carpet, and there's some built-in fixtures.
Cabinets.
Around some of those things that could reduce the price here a little bit, I, I guess, if, uh, those items could be removed. I don't know how much that would lower that. With that one priority, you made that comment.
No.
With one of those.
It was the high company. He asked me about, are we going to remove anything that would have to be pulled out in order to get up under there to get that out there? And I talked to the bullet about it and talked about the Jolly's crew out there. And he says, we could, but let's talk about it. And that's something I can certainly call and see if that would reduce it any.
I heard if you just Jolly's heard, you could get that.
But if it's not, I mean.
Well, if that bid is in here, let's take the bid as.
I'd be suspecting that it is.
It's what it says, you remove approximately fifteen dollars square to the carpet, floor tile, and nasty.
That would be like a carpet cleaning company charging you more to move the couches and hurry it up.
Exactly, exactly.
And some do.
And some do. But so far, there's got to work here, it says they're going to get the job done, so.
It says here in the bottom here, it says all items within containment area will be relocated to another portion of building by order.
Well, the guy with, um, HP and viral, viral vision, he, you know, he, Rodney asked, he said, it's cheaper for y'all to get, like, it might work for them, me to pay fifteen dollars an hour to somebody to do it. Well.
Right there's our answer, right there in my.
Part of that.
You're talking about one priority? Yes. Yeah. Part of that's been done.
Yes, yes.
There might be some other things that.
Well, when they get all the way over project and they have you, I guess, just give us a call, and we'll print sinks or inmates or whatever, and we'll, we'll get that done. Make it happen.
Well, no, I mean, can't you just call them when we get through voting on them and just say, hey, if you need this done, it's going to reduce the price?
But it's what it says. They're out there. That's what it says here, that it's up to our responsibility.
Yeah. It won't reduce the price, it would increase if it were later.
It would increase if they.
Uh, how many motion we use, one priority, environmental services?
Second. Can I get on it pretty quick?
Uh, I will give him the call and say, uh, he didn't give a time, didn't he say five days?
Five days, yeah. The completion time for fucking five days, working days.
Okay, so go ahead and get on the start.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Seif, striking Commissioner Wiley to, to, um, accept the total pricing for asbestos, asbestos abatement from one priority environmental services. That being at ten thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. It says they learn fifty dollars.
Different requirement.
Eleven, so I think it's eleven thousand seven.
Well, that's a different requirement.
Well, we don't have electricity in here, so it's required.
Yes, I don't.
Yes. All that is, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
What was the vote?
Five oh. Ready to get to our nation? Let it be completed. Yeah, let's see, is there any public comments? We'll go out and pray, is there any other public comments to make the broad clerking? If not, we'll move on to item number four.
I will say we did receive the tire lease money the other day. Ninety-three.
Out.
Ninety-three five?
Oh, okay.
Was it?
That's fine.
I mean, the, I'm sorry, the.
Win money. Win, 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 huh?
They're big, it's a dollar.
Win money.
Win mail.
Some type of.
Okay, item number four, consider, um, county clerk's minutes from previous May, November twenty-four, twenty-four, saying, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections that may be in that committee?
Go with it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Updates on securities. Six hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred forty-three.
Forty-three cents. Yeah, she made a copy for us.
So whether that came in, or actually came in, actually put that on the general.
Same here.
Okay, all, a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Poots, to, um, ac-accept those, uh, security pledge updates as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry, five oh. Any budget amendments in this office?
No, sir.
None? Bounties?
I did have some vouchers, always have vouchers. Uh, total amount, one hundred seventy thousand nine oh eight oh three, and of that, one hundred and forty-five thousand three ninety-four forty-eight is out of the general.
So. Motion by Commissioner Poots and by Commissioner Wiley to, um, approve those vouchers payable as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry, five oh.
And I also, while you're here, want to talk about a couple of more vouchers that you saw the Hamilton Hospital.
Yes.
That we received. Um, and this is for January, and I look back to see, we paid, um, they didn't send any, you know, see, we paid in August, September, October, and November. And got those taken care of. Well, this one is, our portion would be eighteen thousand eight seventy-two sixty-one, but in this year, uh, remaining, there's only eight thousand seven fifty-five fifty-three. And if we'll just go ahead and pay out that remaining, it's going to put, I mean, we can't pay anything else this year, or?
I'd say.
Okay, so send them what we have left and just tell them this was all that was left in the budget.
This was the budget, uh? Manager of the budget, that's it.
Agreed.
Sure. You need that in form of a motion?
I guess so, yeah.
It's my motion that we pay the only ambulance service remainder of their yearly budget, which is eight thousand and some change.
So, I'm going to say, whatever. Move it on down the road.
Let's get it out there. Eight thousand.
It's eight thousand seven fifty-five and fifty-three cents. And I can also call and talk to my husband about that, too, and tell him.
Um, when's that contract?
I'll pull that, see, I saw that note on there this morning, and I'll pull it.
That was eight thousand?
Seven fifty-five fifty-three.
Yeah, motion, Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Seif, to, um, submit to the only E on S, the balance remaining of eight thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents, um, as, um, appropriated in the double team budget.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry, five oh.
Talk about one more thing while I'm standing here. We have a, a fee that we just started collecting that looks like a couple of years ago. It's a court appeals fee for five dollars, um, collected out of county district clerk's offices. And there's a, it's a technology fund.
Yes.
Remember that? And, uh, they're needing some programs in the district clerk's office. It's digitizing so they can get it to the court of appeals, is that what?
That is correct.
And so, we looked up. And so, we looked up and looked this for me, what it can be used for, and it says, the money in this account may be used only to digitize court records and preserve the records from natural disasters. Um, it's about, you know, less than five hundred dollars for each program, and in that fund right now, there's two thousand three oh four oh nine.
How many programs, three programs?
Well, right now, they're getting, they have one, he purchased one, and if y'all weren't, and let's take a bit, we're gonna squeeze it out here, but it, this certainly can be used for that. They want it.
There's a sign program of County Attorney's Court, or is it?
Oh, I don't know.
It's just, it's Adobe Acrobat, it's simply used to combine all the PDFs, whether Court of Appeals wants it, apparently, is they want them all to be combined into one single PDF, not be, uh, submitted to them individually. So, uh, from my understanding, that there's not a need in the county clerk's office for...
I've been submitting mine online, and I, either I already have that program or I'm able to do it, but I have.
Okay. I just know that it was requested from the court reporter and then seconded by the district judge, that that is something that they needed and wanted to acquire.
Can I now create PDF files in that?
They can create them, they just can't combine them, it's just a, it's a...
Was it compression type thing?
No, uh, I've, from the way that it is with the free reader that you get online versus the pay for, is it allows you to combine the PDFs into one single file.
Kind of zip out?
No, it's, so it's taking of three PDFs.
For one computer.
And they're separate files.
For three computers, but to give one.
Combine them into one where it's just, say, three separate, three pages, all.
Continuous file.
There's three.
Why would you need one of them?
Well, that's.
One for each computer, it's, it's not.
I'm, I'm just saying, why? That's, that's like wasting.
One of their last ones, they sit here.
You know what I'm saying? Only one person's been sent it, they liked it, or something.
It's, it's very true, it, it's, from my understanding, in the event that one's gone, that the others would have the capability to do so, but either right now, we can stick with one, I, I don't see that, I see it the same way you see it.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, it's not like everybody's been worked on.
We do one and see if it's a problem, then use them to just that one computer with that.
Absolutely.
It's a big problem come by.
Okay, that's.
I still ask.
That's a motion from Commissioner Ford.
Sure.
For one? Yeah, um, what do you call this?
Uh, it's Adobe Acrobat.
You go first, first one, Adobe, Adobe Acrobat for District, District Clerk.
Clerk. That is the district, or the, the clerk technology fund, that's why we have that label.
I'll say.
How much more have we been getting, like, on that blue?
Five dollars, right?
Yeah.
For the... You say two thousand dollars, what we got in there so far?
Yeah, and it was two thousand three hundred dollars.
How often does that deposit do, or, how often do we get that five dollars?
Well, it comes in with, with various different filings, but I mean, it, it gets deposited at the beginning of the month when I do the bank statement.
There's another Court of Appeals fund we have to come up with, and we have to give the money back. I think it's a ten dollar fund.
I don't get it.
Ten dollar fund, I think.
We've got some.
So we don't have to, we don't.
Motion, Commissioner Ford, second by Commissioner, we purchase one Adobe Acrobat program for the district clerk, and that's coming out of the...
It's called, um, Court Technology.
Court's Technology Fund, all in favor?
Ah.
Okay, considering void bonds, one, on K McGee, Justice Peace Clerk, and Dwayne Hinkie, Justice Peace Clerk.
So, say.
All in favor of approval of those bonds?
There are.
Five votes. Item number nine, consider extension agents Brad Marson, P. Warren, request for reimbursement from, um, Marson seven fifty oh two and Kenny four hundred dollars and ninety-six cents.
So.
Say. All in favor of such request for refund?
Ah.
Carry it. Okay, we've got a, um, actual sale of B, item number ten, nine oh nine, South Avenue B and Olive, bid amount of three hundred dollars. I think the, uh, trade value is at thirty-nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars. And they did get, they did get you. Get you over there, but you're not got some of that. So move on then.
I'll say. Okay, I have a petition, Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to accept bid amount three hundred dollars for nine oh nine, South Avenue B and Olive, Texas, put that back, that's all in favor? Five votes. Item number eleven, Young County Appraisal District, request for refunds, I have one from, uh, two, two Young County Appraisal District, and I'm, I'm assuming that, um, they, uh, paid us in era on a value that we're going to reimburse them, but.
It's probably that they brought it to me because it was unusual.
Three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents, and another two Lloyd Pipcock for a wrong account, paid on a wrong account, twelve hundred dollars and fifty-two cents. Say it.
Love money.
Yeah, it is.
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a, um, motion, um, Commissioner Ford, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve such refund as requested by Young County Appraisal District, all in favor?
Ah.
Carry it. Five votes. Number twelve, consider County Judges and Police Association, Texas Annual County Use of eleven hundred dollars, this is separate part of the tax, they're two different organizations. I'm ready to place such use, say. I have a motion by myself, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve such use table for County Judge and Commissioner Association, Texas, for annual use, all in favor?
Ah.
Carry it. Okay. Bar restrictions, is that what we're down?
Thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen.
Radio tower.
Oh, radio tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, radio tower. Got in your package a letter that I wrote to, um, Ms. McMillan and, uh, Solar Systems Inc., back quite some time ago. She is, uh, Solar Systems Inc. and Karen McMillan is represented by property, so, that was November fourteenth, when she was there. It subsequently sent me back, um, uh, questionnaire, questionnaires, which I answered, see there on that, and you also have the original lease, Florida property that was made nineteen seventy-four, I believe. And then subsequent email, following, um, saying if you wouldn't, I'm sure leased that back, but price went up a little bit, you see?
More than a little bit.
You know, it's, um, as indicated to you, Neil and Karen McMillan Solar Systems Incorporated are agreeable to extending the radio tower lease for an additional ten-year period, only a modification in the existing lease, first annual rental payment should be equal to the total amount of property taxes assessed against their property located in abstract number twelve forty-six. The annual rental payable would be adjusted to reflect the change in the amount of taxes assessed in here. This current, um, the current two thousand thirteen tax totaled three thousand thirty-nine dollars ninety-seven seconds, which, um, they're requesting that amount for renewal of that lease.
Really? That's what I was gonna, um, excuse me.
How long is that?
Initial ten-year period.
Well, and then, uh, ten-year lease.
No, each year.
Each year.
But that's, uh, adjusted, it's adjusted every year.
Going from fifty to the amount of taxes on that property.
To this year to the...
Ten-year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So it depends on what the tax is on, that's what we pay is what the taxes on.
Yeah, based upon last, or the current year's taxes.
And what is, went from fifty dollars to...
We, we're not getting a forty-five thousand dollar ten-year contract here.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't want them to get, wouldn't want to get in a battle, you know, where, we got to issue ten years ago, uh, with that, they really didn't want to renew the lease. I don't, I think they, um, in way that they purchased the property that, um, we can lease it, I think it goes along with the, uh, that's a long-term lease, uh, that was given, uh, ninety-nine years, division, so, but they probably have some, I mean, I can't remember, I read the whole lease, but, um, there's probably some adjustment provisions there within that, but.
So we're paying them?
They're paying, we're paying, they're paying the, the taxes on the whole, laying on the whole server.
Right, whole server.
And we're using this big as well, one phone four acres.
Yeah.
That's, um, I did put that in there, but there is...
We're using one phone four acres, how, how much is our lease after?
Well, footprint of that tower.
The footprint of the tower. From Godwater.
God, God water.
What are, uh, other solutions to this problem?
Well, another tower.
Another tower?
Yeah, we moved the tower, rent space on the tower, uh, Texas, uh, let's see, Mobile Phone Texas, they have a tower out on Royal Hill that they lease this space on, but I think it's two hundred dollars a month.
There you go.
And you save money.
We, we save a whole lot of money.
Are we here?
The thing, the tire belongs to us, correctly.
Yeah, the tower belongs to Young County, Young County owns that tower.
If we choose, choose to do something different, then it's up to us to remove that tire from said property and all the equipment, and that's gonna be very expensive.
Personal tires would need to be on that tower, especially on Godwater, putting its tires crooked, got a little crook in it, we broke this up a few months ago, which prompted all of this, uh, we didn't want to do that work on there if we weren't going to be able to utilize that location. I don't know what the legal ramifications are on there, but obviously, you know, they don't want some there.
How much would it cost us to get that thirty-five-year-old tower?
Yeah.
Back up to proper standards?
Well, it, according to Dwayne Hain, and this was been, three months ago, he thought we could move that tower for fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars, take it down, move it back up somewhere else.
Where would we put it that we wouldn't be in the similar situation we're, find ourselves in with this one?
I know a location, and I've been worried about it, that, uh, out on Wigg Body Village place between here and Fort Belham, it's up on the hill, Fort Belham Water has a tower there, has a tank there, it's, um, it's within line of sight for reported residences. I hadn't talked to him about cost or anything like that, he just said he'd be willing to talk to us about it.
The, the other thing is, look at us, it's even affect communications that, we don't want to disrupt any emergency communications right now either.
I mean, is it gonna disrupt them where they can't get signals somewhere?
What if we do this? What if we just check and see what we can get a contract with Mobile Phone Texas?
Long-term contract.
Long-term contract. It could be, it could be from two hundred or under, that's still gonna be a month ahead. And one, two, because number one, we could turn around and sell that tire to somebody.
Absolutely.
Okay? And in the pro, the, in, in the proceeds of the selling of that tire, it'd be up to them to take it down and took two of it. All right, the Roy Lipp, now Roy Lipp, we're gonna have to have another building out there and do more maintenance on that out there, stuff that we're responsible for. If we go with Mobile Phone Texas, Mobile Phone Texas is, is responsible for their tire, high waters, the building, that our radio sets in, the whole nine yards, they're responsible for that, which is gonna be a more adequate situation than what we're in right now. And if we have to have them work on that system, which are the ones that are responsible for working on that system, it'd be more to our advantage for them to have it up where they're at, it's a, I'd say.
Well, like I was saying, is it gonna still be in power? It reaches all areas.
I know.
Like in life, so it takes.
Um, I don't think that you're gonna, as far as the crow flies, you're not looking at that much distance between that radio tower.
You know what I'm saying?
That tower, yeah. Right out here by, um, three eight.
There's been trouble in the outer, outer lying areas, in our northern and northwest.
In our northern, Cali, yeah.
Got trouble with that.
Yeah.
Communications. Sometimes, um, that, there's also a, um, not only is that, um, tower furnished, um, our EMS services, it also furnishes the, um, regional repeater system, weight system, but it's been unemotional, but it's being upgraded to just one tower, which I'll follow it, correct? Now, there'll be other ones, there's, um, the hub tower is, uh, right now, currently in Iowa department, it's in process, I believe, of being moved, which I'll follow, there's one in Jack County, um, one in Ford County, one in Young County, there's, I believe there's five towers in this system, you'll know the system, like it is in Harris County.
Can I, can I add something? I've got a meeting I need to go to.
Yeah.
When you were in that first period, in fifty-five, we lived about five miles east of town, uh, which is now part of Alton Hawkins, uh, place out there, and while we were living there, Texas Electric wanted to, uh, experiment with radios, and they came out, and they gave permission, they came out, they set a fifty-five foot pole, used it for leverage, set an eighty-five foot pole, and they wore it right there, that hard foot from the house. They said that was the highest point, elevation between Grand Four, and so that would be a pretty high point, and, uh, I would imagine that Alton would be really easy, real, uh, reasonable to deal with for, if you're gonna relocate existing tower, that, that might be a good, uh, a good high elevation to put it, which is, I think you work for towers, it's, the higher the better.
And where's that at?
Seating that mountain, about the highest, three.
I was expecting that.
It's close there.
Yeah, it's not, that flood you're moving.
You know what?
Bringing it further away from the tower. I don't even talk to that.
That's a long way away from the other side of the county.
Yeah, that's right, that'd be, not a good place.
Well, frankly, that's where the commissioner's repeater is, is on Seating Mountain.
Then that's pretty good.
And that's, um, and I don't think, well, that's still.
Well, if we could get a short-term contract with the potential for a longer-term contract from Mobile Phones of Texas, that would solve the solution of downtime, because we could get it done before we take it off the tower here, and then look at our option about move, either moving our tower or disposing of our tower, and...
But I totally agree with what Jimmy's saying, because who works on our radios and radio tower and all that stuff?
Mobile Phones Texas, the line on.
Well, we're looking to spend, what, two thousand dollars something for a building out there?
Yeah, at least two thousand dollars for a building.
Something like that, so, there's no need in, in, in having to reinvent the wheel on that thing, they have one unit out there, they have a big enough area to fit all their stuff, and just let it, let it.
And the, what, you say fourteen thousand dollars to get the thing fixed back? Like it need to be fixed?
Well, I would have asked about that, to redo the... To redo the, redo the guy, guy, anchor, some work on the footings.
Footings.
And the building's terrible.
Rigged.
And the tire's thirty, five years old, wasn't it recently straightened, or?
No.
No, it's, it's got a little crook in it, and that's, that's part of what the inspection looked at the crook, and then went out, looked at the footings, and the footings that pulled it. How much more life is, is in that tire? Is anybody else on that tire besides us?
No. And it'd probably be money you had to just let them have the tire for taking them, would probably be the...
I agree.
Be the cheapest way out of it. Because we're looking, if we do this deal here, we're looking at nearly two hundred and fifty-four dollars a year, I mean, a month, with this deal, and it's gonna change.
Yeah, it's gonna change.
I'd love to have a system that we know that's pretty consistent.
I agree. With them doing the maintenance work.
Yes.
And you know it's maintained and taken care of.
Probably that antenna on that tire is probably, it aged, I don't think we've done anything to that antenna, the antenna, has aged, it's probably some age on it.
Well, old tech on it?
Yes. I don't know that we wouldn't be ahead to do something different with that.
I agree with that.
But as the crow flies, you're not, there's not that much difference, and probably I think that much difference either.
I imagine that, right, that tower out there is gonna be under eighty feet maximum. If it were higher than that, it'd have to be climbing, it doesn't have to be... It's more towards the center of the county.
Where?
The one you're talking about.
Yeah, that'd be...
Put it out there. Where's Mobile phone in Texas tied?
Down there.
I hear it, I believe it.
That's two hundred dollars.
I believe that's what the mine quarries may is running.
That's still cheaper and longer.
We can budget a contract, long-term contract, better than a budget, and we can, what the tax rates and evaluations are gonna be.
I wouldn't have to do it. I made a motion, we just go in there and get with, radio, Mobile phone Texas, and see if we can get it, so, a bid on that, and then we'll see if they have an idea of somebody that might be looking for that.
Yeah, let's explore our options, and then, and what about the tower out there, try to find...
We'll get with him, because there's a new guy that took over, the guy that used to do all the tire climbing and stuff, there's a big company doing that now, and they're always leading tire and stuff, see if we can make a deal with him to find a hold for that.
Terry?
Terry.
Yeah, will you want to talk to us?
No, I just...
Say anything?
Come back?
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Good seeing you.
Give to him.
That's what I'm saying, is there's no variety in my...
Without, without two hundred dollars going up, that's twenty-four thousand dollars in a ten-year period.
Yeah.
We're still gonna have it.
Are we being invited to leave?
Well, they didn't want to renew that lease, but I don't really think, you know, I think when, when the property sold, I think that's from the home, I think Solar Systems is second or third time, straight thing. I'm sure the lease goes with it, just like an easement, almost, and I don't know that what that, I haven't read the whole thing, or I think I have, but I can't remember if there was any price for the issue, or whether it was a renegotiation or anything, it was rented from Ruby Hall, and I think seventy-four. So, I don't know how far...
Is there a house up there, too? Is there a house up there, too?
Yeah, there is. Oh, not even over there.
Three thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty, plus.
That's cool, gee.
Break down the barn. I said, how many is for agriculture use?
We had a good deal.
That's what I heard. Put the past year, those days are over.
Those days are over.
Okay. So let's explore our options.
Yes. We'll get with, with Daniel, or who it...
Mr. Wilding, would you do that for us?
I can handle that. I'll do that. And I'll see what, what he suggests us to do, so it doesn't interrupt, which I imagine all it'll take is just putting up another antenna.
If we get ten years at two hundred dollars a month, a twenty-four thousand dollar contract would beat this minimal thirty thousand dollar contract.
Yes.
Yeah, all you can do is have one tower up before you take off, take off that power.
Yeah. All it takes is taking that console, moving it over to their building, if you're...
Maybe down thirty minutes.
Hit them all.
Yeah.
He can put it back up if they want to do it.
I mean, yeah, if we run into that situation, too.
I hope, if they, if they're right, yes, it is.
Okay.
Aye.
Five, aye. Now, over down to the bar restrictions.
Say leave as I did.
I made a motion, you're good.
Aye.